Registered speakers.
Seven one. Can we come together, please? Like to call a meeting to order, please. Everybody, please rise. Begin with today's prayer. Today, as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Will now stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance. Flag. United States of America. In the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Please be seated. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Miss Amara.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yeah.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Yeah.
Counselor Millenazzo.
Here.
Counselor Newm.
You're here.
Aye, President.
All right. Next, we need a motion to accept the minutes of the City Council Meeting of November 6th for acceptance.
So motion.
Moved by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Conway. Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge that Counselor Kennedy is now to be assumed to be Senator Kennedy, and we wish you well. And I did promise him we'd wait till he got sworn in before we gave him our list of financial needs for the city that I know he'll take care of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a vote to cancel the council meetings of 11/27/18, 12/25/18, and 1/19, January 1st. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Cancel council meetings of November 27th, December 25th, and January 1st, 2019.
Seconded.
Motion by Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Cirillo. Thank you.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Ms. Amara.
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott. Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
I guess so.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Newm.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have audit as business, communication, the fiscal 19, budget report. Before we motion any discussion. Need a motion to accept and place and file? By Counselor Millenazzo, seconded by Counselor Elliott.
All right. Is this on the budget?
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's fine, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the CFO, I just had a couple of questions on the budget. Looks like we're on track under projections in many areas. I just want to commend the administration, the police, and the fire. Usually, some of these items like overtime and court time, we're a third of the way through the year, and we're well under budget. And, you know, court time is, as you know, Madam Manager. I had a question on another item, DPD homeless is $125,000, and I was wondering what that exactly is for. And none of the money is spent, so I know we have some homeless issues, and it looks like homeless contingency or...
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. This year in the budget, previously, DPD had a staff person who coordinated homeless prevention activities for the department. That position was not filled, and the decision was made to put out a contract for some of the services, as well as some of the analytic data reports that are now required for the state for homelessness reporting. So, an RFP was issued. I know that there were responses. No money has been spent, which indicates that perhaps some of the contract work has not been underway. I see that there are some representatives from DPD who may be able to elaborate further, but that was the purpose for the appropriation and what it's in the budget for.
So, is there expectation because there's not an employee to use that 125, or is the hope to... It's specifically a contract for reporting requirements?
Well, and for the continuum of care, Linda King was the employee who used to be employed by the Department of Planning and Development for a long time.
Right.
And did a great job for the department. She retired.
Right.
And the decision was made to contract some of those services. This money was appropriated for that purpose.
Okay. And I just had one other question on page 33, under principal on maturing debt. Are those payments made up front, we're at 84%, 89%? Are those just initial payments that are made at the beginning of the fiscal year? Or are those final, and can we expect some savings there?
So, as far as the debt is concerned, Counselor, for the principal payments, typically, those are one-time-a-year interest typically gets paid twice a year at different times, depending on the debt issuance. I would expect that by the beginning of the calendar year that we should be paid up on principal for maturing debt. There will be another round of interest payments sometime in the third quarter, March-ish. So, it does seem like there may be some balance available in the debt service budget. However, sometimes we use that to fund any refunding opportunities that may come to our attention throughout the year to save money.
Okay. And just lastly, through you, Mr. Mayor. Workers' compensation, we're close to 60%, both for the city and the school. Is there any particular reason why we're sort of at those points, ones for, you know, it's almost $650,000, or 625?
So, these two accounts typically run over budget, the workers' comp, especially the schools. We try to budget as lean as possible, however, sometimes it's not sufficient, and it may be that the Solicitor's Office has some additional information about this, but this is not an uncommon occurrence.
Okay. And do we transfer typically, do we have to transfer out in a year to cover any of these negative balances?
Oftentimes, for the school workers' comp, there's a transfer necessitated.
Okay. I know that we've worked on this a long time, Madam, through you, Madam Manager of the Solicitor, and putting procedures in place. Any update on, I know it's sometimes just kind of cyclical, or there's no real rhyme or reason to it, but, I mean, it's quite a bit of money, so...
Right. It's quite a bit of money. I guess I would say at the outset, I can't recall a year in which we haven't necessitated a transfer in these accounts. In a report that I gave to the council probably about a year ago, one of the things I highlighted was the fact that these accounts have largely stayed budgeted at exactly the amounts that we see, or sometimes even have seen reductions. Meanwhile, costs for medical benefits have gone up. Employee salaries have gone up through collective bargaining agreements, and so these budgets have remained in effect for a very, very long time. So, that's part of it. I will note that this year for the school department, we have seen a rather marked increase in the number of reported injuries. So, school department typically has the most number of injuries of our various groups. However, this year, I think the numbers reported injuries for the school department exceed that of police, fire, and city, largely DPW combined. So, it's normally very high, but it's much higher than normal, and that also adds to the exacerbates the problem.
Right. Can we get a report? Is it possible to get a report? I know no names, but it'd be interesting to see where we have been in the last five years, and I think you make a good point where salaries, I mean, the budget is level, but some other costs will go up, and it'd be nice to... It'd be good to have the number of cases, because I know we have staff that we send the individuals to in order to get evaluated versus in the past, that was just kind of an ongoing trial and error.
Right. And absolutely, in fact, I think that the timing is good for a sort of a revisit and to take a look at some of our historical data and where we're tracking at present as compared to that data.
That's good. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further questions? All right. Your Honor? Yes. Before we get into manager's business, could we go out of order and take 7-1 suspension rule? We have speakers here for that. Second. Mr. Millenazzo. Counselor Millenazzo. All right. 7-1, order of a 60-day trial on Perry Street. We have a speaker. Yeah, a few speakers. Okay. Before that, I'm going to waive the full reading, the second reading by title pursuant to Chapter 266 of Code of Ordinance, the City of Lowell, Massachusetts concerning Section 266-6, therefore entitled Temporary Experimental Regulations, Temporary Traffic Regulations, are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. All right? Any motion to adopt?
I'll second his motion to suspend.
To suspend? But to get, we need a motion to adopt, right? Okay. Okay. Do we have registered speakers? Jason Gilbo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Gilbo. I'm a resident at 80 Rogers Street. They are the new townhomes that abut Perry, our backside. I've lived there for about four years now, and obviously, the two-way was a real congestion there. And talking with neighbors, yes, they said that, you know, over the years, they were stating that there was possibly going to be a time where, you know, they'll change it to a one-way street. And 14 or 17 days ago, the signs went up. So, when I went back in and looked at some of these minutes, I'm looking to see that there was a 60-day trial for the one-way street to go in. And now I see 17 days later, there's a motion to take it down. So, I'm just trying to feel where that study came and how much came back to the City Council itself in regards to the kind of traffic pattern somebody saw down there, to whether or not this should stay a one-way, or, you know, now I see they want to take parking away on the westerly side of Perry Street. I feel this will be bad. There are five houses from Rogers Street to Sherman Street. Two of them are duplexes. There are multiple cars there. So, they utilize the westerly side of Perry for parking, as well as some of the residents of 80 Rogers Street. I know in the statement, it here, it said that back when these condos were built, the residents were assured that they would not be impacted due to the availability of three parking spaces per unit behind the condos. We do not have three spaces per condo units. We have 34 units. Each unit is designated two spots, one in the garage and one in their driveway, and we have 16 visitor spots on the backside. So, whenever we have visitors, that's where they go. So, we are only allotted two. There are multiple units that have more than one car, and they do utilize the Perry Street side. So, taking that away will take away the parking from some of the people that have more than one car in our condo complex, making them have to park further away from their homes, whether it be on Concord Street, or down the road somewhere else, or even further down Perry. Now, I know when I park my car, I want to be able to see it or know where it is. So, I think this is a bad situation to take away the parking on the westerly side, and I think we should just try to keep it the one-way. I've seen a lot of positives in regards to this one-way. The noise reduction, for one, has gone down. Traffic has gone down in front of our areas. And the noise issue, it was a beast before, back and forth with, you know, loud cars and whatnot. But now, within these past 17 days, we've seen a dramatic change in regards to the traffic pattern, which has come down. And so, I don't... My motion is to suspend it as well and to see where it goes with the one-way.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Craig Magnet. Okay. Elizabeth Silva.
Hi. My name's Elizabeth Silva. I've lived in that area for 48 years. Not a year or two, 48 years. I have owned business there for 32 years. We've all lived, you know, one-way or another, with traffic, without traffic, stopping for the other car to come because that's what you're supposed to do, be polite. We've never had such a big impact, such a big problem. It's impacted my business, okay? It's been there for 32 years. People come down Rogers Street to go into Perry Street, and they cannot. At that time, they need to go all the way down, over the river, onto Lauren Street, or stop suddenly and, you know, obviously have a problem with traffic, or, you know, get hit by a car, whatever. I don't believe this one-way is working at all. I do believe that someone needed to police the zoning board and the Boards of Appeal because when they came in to do the homes, they said it was going to be three parking spaces. They said that they were not going to be a nuisance to Perry Street. So, when they built that home, all of those homes, the developer came up to City Hall and stated that it was going to be this, that, and the other thing, made a beautiful picture. Everybody fell for it. Nobody went back on the books or policed. You know, what did they say at the zoning board? What did they say to Boards of Appeal? And now, there's a problem. Because now, like this fellow said, that there's not three parking spaces, there's only two. They said that they were going to have three. Somebody should have said, wait a minute, where's that other third parking space? Now, we have a problem with the one-way. I don't think it's fair to Concord Street, Pleasant Street, because we're all one-ways. And now, we're going to have Perry Street as a one-way? I don't think it should happen like that. I think we need to remove the one-way and put no parking space on that area. I don't have anything against the Condos Association or the condo owners, but there's a problem, and it's been a problem ever since they came in. You know, I don't want to be the bad person and state it, but that's what has happened.
Thank you.
Fatima Pimentel.
Hi. My name's Fatima Pimentel. I've lived on Concord Street for 38 years. I own a small business, so I have two big vans. Perry Street being the one-way in that little section makes me go on to Pleasant Street, which is very tight compared to Concord Street. Right now, it's decent because there's no snow, but we all know when snow comes, not everyone cleans it, so that makes me go on to High Street. Guess what? School buses have decided somewhere, somehow, children can't walk five extra feet, so we're stopping in the morning to get to our home. There is a church, Saint... Saint what? St. Sands. When they have a funeral, they double park. Guess what? And hey, when somebody dies, we all respect, but it's hard to get through there. Why only make that little section a one-way because of the condos? Hey, let it be the way it was. We all get along. Yes, people on Perry Street at that little section used to park on the opposite side, but there weren't so many cars. We all get along. I mean, if you go further down the street, it's the same thing. They park on both sides. To make that little section a one-way is actually driving people who live on Concord Street nuts because we have to take a detour to get to our homes. I would like it to be taken down. Let them park there if they really want to, if you guys decide that they can park there. They will lie to, we will lie to about the three spots, but do not make that little section of Perry Street be a one-way because it literally makes us go around. I have four cars in my home. Two of them sit in my driveway, and two of them have to fit in front of my house. I make do. Everybody else should be able to because we've been there for 38 years. We've never had an issue with this. All of a sudden, that sign goes up, none of us were told about it. We just happened to go. Can you imagine? I'm not paying attention because it's never been a one-way. I go in and I hit someone. Guess what? It's my fault. It was not thought out correctly. I need you guys to really think about it and make it a two-way like it was before. Thank you.
Courtney Houston.
Good evening, everyone. I am a resident of Perry Street that is within the 480-foot stretch being discussed about banning parking. Within that stretch, there are five homes. Four of those homes are two-family homes, nine families, with a total of 15 cars to park in front of five homes. If you were to ban the parking on that side of the street, it creates a larger problem for the actual residents of Perry Street. Yes, it forces the condo association to park within their own driveways and garages, but it leaves the residents of Perry Street with nothing. We're then left to park blocks away, potentially up to Fort Hill, which is a three, four-block walk. I don't want any of my family to have to walk that far. It's not the safest neighborhood, and I don't think anyone would disagree. I believe everyone is concerned about the safety of their own family. I'd also like to point out that on October 9th, in the city memos, the traffic engineer stated that it is not appropriate or feasible to limit on-street parking on Perry Street because of the amount of residents. And it was also my understanding that the one-way trial is being amended because businesses have complained that it has affected their deliveries. In my opinion, this is a minor inconvenience that can be solved simply by driving around the block. These drivers would adapt to the new direction given time, and we've seen traffic change over the past two weeks. This, to me, seems like a far better solution than displacing the long-term residents and putting safety at risk. In my opinion, I would make the entirety of Perry Street from Rogers Street to Andover Street a one-way, directing traffic north. This would keep parking, go with the traffic pattern of neighboring streets, allow traffic and deliveries to come from the direction of major highways, and address both sides of Perry Street, which are equally congested. I think we've seen a big difference in the one-way. It's not a perfect solution. Neither is having parking on both sides, but I think we can come to an agreement that works for everybody.
Jim Houston.
Hi. Jim Houston, 186 Perry Street. I am a resident of Perry Street and have been there for the last 26 years. I reside on the end that have recently been designated one-way for a 60-day trial. I understand that just after two weeks, this is already going to change to limit parking on only one side of the street, and feel that this is going to make a greater impact on those of us who live here. There are five houses on this end of Perry Street with four out of five being two-family homes, which have either limited driveway space or none at all. All have multiple vehicles requiring on-street parking, which is to be expected. If you restrict parking on one side, it will clearly impact the residents, forcing them to park blocks away from their own residence and maybe impacting other neighborhoods. This creates a different type of safety concern and not something anyone will want for their family members. What happened to the comments from the traffic engineer on the memorandum from October 9th minutes, we state that there are homes along both sides of Perry Street for approximately 480 feet from Rogers Street to Sherman Street, which utilize on-street parking. It is not feasible or appropriate to limit on-street parking in this section of Perry Street. I have lived here well before the Rogers Street condos were constructed and attended several of those meetings where residents were assured parking was not going to be impacted, but that has certainly not been the case. During any given evening, I can tell you there are multiple cars from those living in the condos parked on Perry Street, in some case from residents who own two vehicles and both parked on the street. If you restrict parking to one side of the condo, residents have a solution, but those of us who reside on Perry Street will still have a problem. Limiting parking to one side of the street will create a larger problem for the residents of Perry Street and the opposite of what we're assured was not going to happen. Excuse me. We are only three weeks into the 60-day one-way trial, and yes, it has been chaotic at first, but things are slowly getting better. It would be beneficial if the city would look into making the full length of Perry Street one-way, as I do not believe this end of Perry Street is the only area having problems with vehicles traveling in both directions due to cars being parked on both sides of the street. If Perry Street was one-way in the opposite direction of the trial, it would keep in accordance with the neighboring one-way streets and keep the additional parking for residents on both ends of Perry Street and address the safety issues. both ends of Perry Street and address the safety issues. I know you have heard from businesses and maybe even condo residents, but they are not the ones this affects the most. The condo residents have both garages and driveways as well as overflow parking, and the businesses lock their doors and leave at the end of the day, but we residents are here around the clock and do not have any other options. I would like the city to take a long, hard look at the situation and listen to the residents who they assured would not be impacted, as I am not sure there is a solution that does not involve removing parking. Actual address for the condos is Rogers Street. Rogers Street, by making more, just a portion of Perry Street one-way, you are only redirecting traffic up Pleasant Street and down Sherman Street. If I have to go to park in front of my house, I have to go up Pleasant Street, come down Sherman Street, and Sherman Street is in the same situation with cars double-packed on either side. Last evening, no, not that, five houses with four out of five multiple families on this end of Perry Street have approximately fifteen to eighteen cars, which we will now have to try parking in approximately four-hundred feet or less. Almost if not impossible not to mention that this would not allow anyone to have a visitor. Current residential placards only allow for one spot in front of the house, so everything else will be first come, first served, making it not very, very good neighborly relations if one family takes up all the parking. Also, there is nothing stopping residents from other streets taking parking spaces as well. There have been people already observed doing this. Not everybody is going to get what they want, but we have to work together to come up with the best solution for everybody. Thank you.
Discussion?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier.
I did receive some calls, two from residents that were concerned about half of Perry Street being one-way, and it is rather confusing, so I don't know what everybody thinks, but if it were me, but I'm not a traffic engineer, but I would term, I would amend this order by terminating the sixty-day trial and make the entire Perry Street one-way from Rogers to Andover, from Rogers to Andover Street. That's the only solution that I could, I'm not saying it's perfect.
Yes, please.
So Natasha Vance, Transportation Engineer for the City of Lowell. All right, so I wanted to say thank you to all the residents for coming out to address this. This is the first sixty-day trial that I've ever gotten any comments on in my time as a transportation engineer, and of the comments that I got, virtually every single one of them was opposed to the one-way restriction. When I initially responded to the motion, I was unaware that the condos had any parking at all. When I initially went and looked, the street is completely densely parked in that section with cars basically bumper-to-bumper. It's extremely narrow and extremely difficult to get through, and it is not safe for two-way traffic. My big concern is when the snow comes and someone is trying to turn off of Rogers Street and there's a car coming, and residents have told me they had to back out onto Rogers Street, which is obviously very unsafe. And my big concern is the safety of our residents when they're driving in their cars. I understand that there is no solution that's going to make everyone happy, and, you know, there's about four-hundred feet, parking spots are typically about twenty feet long, that leaves twenty spots on the side with the five homes. The, I went back and looked at the planning board decision from 2007 when the condos were approved. The planning board decision does not say that part of conditional approval was that the condo residents could not park on the street. According to the plans that they submitted, there is a garage spot and two spots behind each condo, which may not be how it is, yeah. And it's a difficult decision, in my opinion, given the number of businesses that are located on Perry Street, and I've heard from four of those businesses who are concerned about the difficulty they have with getting deliveries, with people coming to their residences and it impacting their businesses, excuse me, to their businesses and it causing a negative impact. I feel like I can't definitively say it's a good idea to make it one-way the entire length without studying it in more detail. I can say that eliminating parking solves the problem of keeping two-way traffic. It doesn't solve the problem of people having a place to park, which is an issue all over Lowell, and I'm always reluctant to remove parking.
So could I ask you this? The street that's next to Perry, is it Concord?
Yes.
And isn't it one-way going the opposite way?
Yes, and then you have Pleasant and High. Pleasant's one-way, the other way, and then High is two-way.
So, did you have any complaints about Concord Street?
Like I said, it's the way Concord goes this way. The beginning of Perry and the next street are both going down towards...
So the way that I see it...
Which was intentional to prevent traffic coming off Rogers.
Now Concord Street is one-way going the opposite way from Andover to Rogers, is it?
I mean, yes.
So what is the harm in putting the next street one-way the opposite way?
I can't say that there's...
Rogers to Andover.
Yeah, there may not be a harm, but there is, for instance, there's a greater...
Did you have any complaints from Concord Street being one-way?
No, that was already one-way. I did hear from a couple residents of Concord Street who were concerned, who were confused by the situation.
It is confusing. It is confusing when you have a Concord Street one-way the entire length, and then you get the next street halfway, a certain half of it going the same way. It's crazy, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I don't see the problem with Concord Street being one-way this way and Perry Street being one-way the whole length. How does that confuse business delivery? I don't get it.
Well, I don't think it confuses the delivery. The problem is that Concord Street is extremely narrow as well, and delivery trucks can't go... I'm not saying that there is not a better solution, but there...
I think they all agree with what I said. Do you agree, or am I talking out of my hat?
I think, I think that there are people who didn't, I think that, so everyone that I have heard of, heard from would prefer their, the street remain two-way and eliminate parking. The people I've heard from tonight, I heard from Mr., I spoke to Mr. Houston on the phone today. I have not actually spoken to the other residents.
What I'm saying is just a suggestion. You're the traffic engineer, I'm not, but I mean...
I guess what I'm saying is I don't want to make a decision just on the spot.
Well, I'm not asking you to do that, but I'm telling you that I feel, this is my opinion.
Yeah, I did want to clarify a couple things. When, so, and you had some questions about the length of the sixty-day trial. The sixty-day trials are up to sixty days, so they can be terminated prior to sixty days. So that's one question you had. The other question was that I said it was not feasible or recommended to eliminate parking. At that point, I was not aware that there was additional parking off-street, so I just wanted to clarify.
So why don't we just terminate the ordinance before the sixty-day trial and at least do that? And then the rest of it, you can determine the suggestion that I made.
Yep. And that's perfectly fine with me.
Okay, so then we'll do that. Okay.
Councilor Mercier? If we just, if we take it out and allow the city engineer to perhaps work with the neighborhood groups a little further, give us a further study on this matter.
I was, I was actually going to propose that we send a survey to all of the residents of Perry Street and perhaps the people on Concord Street, since it will affect them as well regarding various options. Like, we can't ignore the safety issue, but...
We trust in the safety issue.
Is this going to exceed sixty days? Will what you're saying exceed the sixty days so that we won't be able to...
I'm saying I think it's probably reasonable to remove the one-day designation for now. I'll prepare a, I don't want to say a survey exactly, but I'll send a letter to everyone and discuss some of the options and try and get some consensus. And I think everyone needs to recognize, as several people said, a solution isn't necessarily going to be perfect for everyone, but we can try and work on something for compromise.
That's right.
Councilor Mercier, it's Councilor Elliott, then the city manager wants to make a statement. Councilor Elliott.
Well, could we get some clarification on exactly what we're trying to, how this got to this point and what the next step is going to be at? I know the area very well. It's a very confusing area. Did this come to us as a result of the safety issue of two lanes going down that road, complicated by parking on presumably both sides?
Yes. Natasha, if you can explain the history of why you put in the sixty-day trial?
Sure. Yes, exactly, Councilor Elliott. There's, it's a, the street is twenty-eight feet wide, there's two lanes of traffic and two lanes of parking, and it's simply too narrow for two-way traffic, and there were complaints. And we were, I was just trying to resolve that safety issue. And there's, and there's basically three options. One way in one direction, one way in the other direction, or two-way traffic with parking on one side of the street. Those are the three viable options to make it safe.
Are there, at this point, not enough parking spots on one side of the street as a result of those condos going in? And that is at every level wrong.
Well, apparently, from what we understand, the, initially, the thought was there was three parking spaces per condo and there would be no need for any on-street parking.
Correct.
In reality, that turned out not to be accurate, and so the condos do use on-street parking, as well as the existing residences are using on-street parking.
Correct.
So there is a demand for on-street parking, which makes it difficult. And as Natasha has said, from where I sit, I can see one half of the room wants one thing and the other half definitely wants another. And I know we're not King Solomon, but I do think sending this back to the traffic engineer to further study, this, a solution's probably not going to make everybody happy. I think we've all been around long enough to know that that's probably the case, but we can't abandon the safety concerns as well. So that would be my suggestion. Let, perhaps, you know, what you've heard is the current seventeen-day trial was not working, and so that was the reason for the petition to terminate that. And yet, we need to have, there has to be a plan.
Yeah. I think the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the plan is presumably to abandon this trial, things will revert back to the way...
Revert back to the...
I'm concerned about the businesses, and I think, I think this woman, Fatima, brings up a good point. Anyone that travels down there regularly, you can get lost in that maze if you're trying to go in one particular area. So I think it'd be important to try to straighten that out, and as you mentioned, not avoid the traffic or safety issues, but, you know, if that condo complex has created more of a parking issue, then is there a way for us to enforce that? And I guess my follow-up would be, are there parking placards?
We can, we can look into it. I'm not certain, I know I've heard anecdotally what was said at the time that the condominium was being proposed at the various boards. What actually made it into the final planning board, you know, record is, might be different, but we'll examine that. So I'm not sure there is anything we can do to enforce, but we'll look at that and we'll look at the records of that. But if the reality is the condominium owners don't have three spaces despite the fact that it was represented before they bought it, you know, that's an issue.
I'm sorry, were you going to say something?
No, I was going to say what the manager just said.
Okay, well, I don't know if you need a motion or not to abandon this sixty-day order, but I...
Let me just, I think...
It's a motion to withdraw.
So the motion would be to...
I just wanted to be clear that the recommendation from the traffic engineer was to terminate this trial for now.
Correct.
And then refer it back to you to do further work.
And does that coincide with the memo that we got from...
Well, the memo, I think, is suggesting removing parking, and so it would differ.
And one-way designation.
Yeah.
It is.
So the, we wouldn't be removing parking at this point, would refer it back to Natasha for further study.
Okay, I make a motion that we refer this back to the traffic engineer and...
And terminate the current sixty-day trial.
So motion made by Councilor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Cirillo, to withdraw this motion and further study. There's Councilor Kennedy, then Councilor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion, but I do think that the traffic engineer, what's a reasonable time? Twenty-one days, twenty-eight days?
Sure, yeah, three weeks.
Three weeks. With a report back due to the city council in twenty-one days? And all I know for sure is that it can't stay two-way with traffic on both sides. The street is just not wide enough to do that.
Correct.
So there has to be, there has to be a change. Now, maybe if there's, if there are parking spaces on one side, those could be dedicated to people that live in the areas, you know, such as the Houston's, which apparently use parking now. And so that would maybe take care of part of it. If we took all of the parking that was going to be allowed on one side of the street and designated spots for residents, that might be part of the solution. But I have to agree that there's, everybody's not going to come out of this smiling, but we also cannot keep it the way that it is.
Those streets are narrow and require some good thought. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spent a lot of time down in those streets, and I know that it is, it can be certainly very tight. I just have a, and I agree with the city manager in what, bring it back and take a look at this again. I just have a couple quick questions through you to the city manager. Do we have any idea how many condos are down there?
Actually, it's thirty-four.
It's six, five individuals, thirty-four units.
Thirty-four units.
But if at this point of information, we also have the church right across the street, right near there, too, there's those...
Which are also condominiums.
Okay, is that, okay, that's part of it then, right? Is that correct?
It's a part of it, it's a separate condominium.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that, is that part of the, the developer said that there were three spots? Is that, well, all right then, let's go back to the thirty-four. That's what I want to concentrate on right now. The thirty-four, you've got supposedly three, three spots, is that correct for each one?
That was what was represented, but it's not what they have, apparently.
All right, here's the question I have. In a project like this, would it be, would it be developed in different phases? Would there be phase one, phase two, phase two, and phase three or something? Is that, is that the way it would normally be done? And the reason why I'm asking that is, don't we take a look to find out that what is, what is said by the contractor is actually in reality happening? And we're waiting until, we're waiting until all thirty-four are finished to find out that they don't really have three spaces? I don't, I...
I don't know what happened, but that's why I said, we'll look into this and find out, you know, just preliminarily, we had someone look at the minutes, and I don't think three spaces are part of the planning board, but we'll get your report, Councilor. I don't know what happened.
But you see what I'm saying here? I mean, somebody, somebody's got a job in the city that is supposed to be inspecting this to find out whether there's three spots or not.
Well, it's even before that. It would be, what would be the requirements? And so if the planning board or the respective boards didn't have it as part of the requirement. So I think that's what we need to get to the bottom of, was there a representation made, but it never made it into, you know, the requirements.
I mean, somebody dropped the ball, it certainly compounded the problem that we have over there right now.
That's right, and that's what we're trying to deal with now.
Okay, thank you very much.
All set. Any further discussion? Councilor Kennedy?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the developer may have, may have told people that he was going to have three spots, but I don't think that the zoning code requires, I think it's like two-point-five or something like that is the requirement, so that, and they're pretty, you know, there may be a space short of that, if there's sixteen spaces in addition to the two at each unit. So I'm not sure that that, you may have said there was going to be three, but I don't think we require three.
Okay. Thank you. Will the city engineer actually, can you look into all of that?
Yes.
Just to provide that information that's requested by the council?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All set? Thank you. We'll now go back to the general public hearing. We have an ordinance to create a new position and salary of a syringe collection program coordinated at the Health and Human Service Department. Okay, I want to open up a hearing for those who want to speak in favor of creating this position. Hearing's open, anyone who would speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, madam manager. Should I pull it down?
State your name.
Okay. I'm Karen Vigru, I'm the Director of the Health and Human Services Department for the City of Lowell. I am here to speak in favor of the position. I think we're all aware that discarded syringes have been an issue in the city for some time. We have tried a few different methods to address that. We did have someone in the city who has left employment with the city, but he was doing that during business hours. And we've had our ambulance provider, Trinity EMS, that had agreed that they would cover evening and weekends. And so between the city employee and Trinity, we had some coverage to respond to reports of syringes. of syringes throughout the city. When that employee moved on to a different position with another community, we had a gap. And over the summer, several of the city departments, city manager, fire, police, finance, health, I think that was, and Trinity, we just were meeting over the summer and trying to come up with a solution, and our ambulance provider was covering any of the reports and needs that surrounded syringes that were found in our public green spaces. So, this position has come out of those meetings as a way to address having someone that the community could call and report a syringe that was found in a public space, as well as working with other community organizations that deal with syringe services throughout the city. If, right now, if someone from the public does come across a syringe, they can call the police department's non-emergency line, the 937-3200 line to report that. Once this position is in place, they'll also be able to report it online, I think they might even be able to report that at this time, similar to reporting a pothole. So, they'd be able to go into the city website and report that. And then, we would have this person who's working full-time at the Health Department who could respond to that. Our hopes is that by having that person, not only would they be responding as calls come in, but that they could be working proactively throughout the city and our public spaces to go to areas that we know are issues throughout the city, and proactively be maintaining that, as well as working with community organizations to get a handle on this situation so that we don't keep having syringes found throughout the city. Right now, we have funding in the city Health Department through vacancy, and so, we're able to fund it without it hitting the, any, without requesting additional funding right now, through the end of June, which I believe will give us time to assess, you know, is this working? Do we need to tweak it before we are actually asking for more funding for it? And I think it'll be a good way for us to measure how that's working in the city. This position will be located, as I said, in the Health Department, but in our Substance Use and Prevention Department, which is overseen by Laney Emond, and she is with us this evening. Laney oversees several opioid-related grants that we have, as well as the co-op team. And so, we thought that this would be the perfect place to place this position, so that even if they had to go into an area in the city that might not be the best place for someone to respond to alone, they could team up with some of the co-op members that are in a lot of these areas all the time. They know a lot of the people in the community, that would be a great matchup, and that way we could make, ensure people's safety, but also be addressing the issue at the same time.
Thank you. Council Elliot?
No, I just wanted to speak on it, I don't know, I forget, we're in a public hearing, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak in favor? Chief, one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to speak in favor of this position. Having discarded dirty needles around the city is a big hazard to our children, to our citizens, but especially to our first responders. We're suffering from the opiate overdose crisis like all other communities across the Commonwealth and across the country. So, we're finding many needles around the city and parks and other public places. When we respond to these overdoses, we often have to kneel down on the ground to administer Narcan, to administer rescue breathing to people. And if one of our firefighters, our police officers, our EMTs, or our paramedics gets stuck by a needle, it can cause diseases like HIV and hepatitis. So, it's a great danger to our staff, it's a danger to our recreation staff in the summer in the parks, it's a danger to our co-op team, they're often visiting different sites around the city where they do find discarded needles. And as Karen mentioned, since we lost Dave Willet, our health inspector, he was picking up a lot of these needles, and Trinity's filled in the gap, but they can't keep doing it at the rate they are. So, I'm in favor of this position, and I think it'll make life safer for our children, our citizens, and our first responders. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else wants to speak in favor? Favor? This portion is closed. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Any motion to adopt by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Cirillo? Roll call? Can we speak?
Oh, can I speak?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I want to thank Madam Manager for coming up with the solution to the problem. I know I filed the motion a number of weeks, maybe a number of months ago, in response to, unfortunately, the problem of syringes throughout the city. Just before I get into my brief comments, will this person literally be going around the city? I see coordinator, will this individual be going around to literally be picking these up?
Yes.
Because now, we have to, we have Trinity on contract, right?
Well, Trinity actually is just doing it, even though it isn't part of their requirement under their contract. They have been doing it both day and night, but they will continue to assist on evenings and weekends as they had been doing previously. But, this person, more than just reacting, and I think, you know, Karen had mentioned that, will be proactively going out as well. You'll be educational, working in terms of other providers, but also going to those spots that we know we get calls for frequently. And our first responders and our EMTs can tell us where those spots are. So, it will be twofold, reacting, but also proactive.
And I think, I think that's important, and we all have received the calls, we've all found them throughout the city, and it's a safety hazard, it's a public health issue. The last thing we need are our first responders and residents being, you know, poked by a needle. Unfortunately, I think it's sad, we've held the line on so much, but I'm going to support this position because it's essential to the safety, and the last thing, we just don't need needles around the city. It's an epidemic, we're working at it, it's not going away soon, and knowing the spike in HIV cases that the city and Maric Valley has experienced in the last number of months, I think this, this position is vital to the city. So, I'm going to support it, and hopefully, we won't need it for a great length of time, but in the meantime, just want people at home to know, we're talking about thousands and thousands of needles, many of which end up in the Marimac River, which I know there's an effort to, to address that, and it's not just low, they're coming, they're coming down from upstream, but we're talking tens of thousands. And that's a concern when we, many communities take their drinking water out. So, I'm going to stop there, but I think this is, this is a good thing. Thank you for following up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Lee?
Thank you. I just wanted, a couple of comments, too, that I'm glad that this is going to be a proactive approach to this, because that's what the job should be, you know? We know where the hotspots are. This person or coordinator should be basically out every day checking all these hotspots and not waiting for calls to come in. I do want to say that, you know, when we lost our health inspector there at the time, that was a big loss for the city. He was very proactive, he knew every, all the players in the city and everything, so, with that being said, I hope this works out, and I'm glad that it's a, so, it's going to be a trial for six months while funding's available?
Well, we're not, we're doing it under the existing budget, because it does fit. We've had vacancies in the Health Department as far as trying to keep school nurses, and so, there is money in the existing budget. So, it gives us an opportunity between now and June 30th to see how is this working? You know, if, if it is working, you know, we'll certainly be putting it likely into the budget. If it has to change, we'll cross that bridge, so, but that's, that's how we're trying to fund it right now, without having to look for additional monies in the current budget.
Okay, can we just make sure we get an update come June or July?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
And we will continue to work with Trinity and, you know, other partners. It's been, it's been a collaborative effort, and you're right, when Dave Willet left, he would not only get needles, but to go to the camps and do inventory and knew what was going on. And so, we will be working collaboratively on all those fronts.
Council Nul, then Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with my fellow counselor, this is a needed position to address safety to our children and our family. I think, you know, this position, I'm sure the individual will partner or coordinate with other entity that addressed these issues as well. And that, like Counselor Leahy's suggestions, that since this is a trial basis, we know it's needed, maybe an update report on this certainly would be helpful. Thank you.
Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very happy to support this position, it is well-needed. We have the co-op team at the Sheriff's Office, they go out every day and save lives, but they don't only do that, they go across the street, as Kevin Jones from the Fire Department had a Saturday where he took a group of kids to play soccer down at the base, the bottom of the South Common, but before he brought them there, he did a sweep of the area, and he picked up 18 needles. So, we know that that's a much-needed site when you see that. Every now and then, people come into the Sheriff's Office and say that they see the needle, so, I just put on the gloves, and I go out there, we have a shop dispenser. And I wonder if we could get shop dispensers at the sites where the campsites are, because maybe they'd want to help out, too, and put the needles in there and do their part, I don't know, maybe they could do that, but it is a much-needed position. I'm very happy, and I hope that coordinator comes to the Sheriff's Office and goes across the street, because it's quite evident there's a lot there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No.
Madam Manager? All set? Roll call? Mr. Maris?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazo?
Yes.
Council Nul?
Yes.
Nine years. Thank you. Next, we have communication with the city manager. The first one is restorative justice program. Council Nul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to city managers for reaching out to DA Ryan and Judge Blitman. Looking forward to subcommittee meeting on November 20. I believe the practice of restorative justice is important, because it gives more option to, for non-violent youth offender to serve the community in lieu of jail time. And this program really is a great program, so we're looking forward to learn more from both DA Ryan and Judge Blitman on this subject, so, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager, any discussion?
No, I think the update speaks for itself. They will be here next Tuesday night at the subcommittee, and the, I believe the Chief of Police will be here as well, as you requested, Counselor.
Thank you. Next, we have Lowell Fire Department, Lowell Police Department, response to marijuana Council Elliot?
This is a good report, I didn't file a motion, but I did want to ask a question on a notice that we received relative to marijuana licenses. We received an email, Madam Manager, regarding a public hearing that's being taken place on Westford Street.
Right.
And I was taken aback, because I know one has been issued, and I was, maybe I was unsure exactly what the process was, or what the process is, excuse me. Can you explain that? I know we received applications, and there was a work group, and I, I thought that any future retail, we're going to come through the subcommittee, or you're going, or the council would know?
Yeah, we didn't, we haven't given any host community agreement yet. What, but each applicant is required prior to getting approval from the state to hold that type of meeting under the regulations. This particular applicant has gone ahead to have their community meeting. We have not had an agreement for, to issue a host community agreement. I know when we went to the subcommittee, there was a suggestion that those community meetings be held before we issue host community agreements, and so, some of the applicants are doing just that, so, that, but they are required under the regulations to do that.
So, we haven't selected the additional floor?
We have not, not yet.
Doesn't it make sense to me? I'm just concerned it's sending mixed messages, certainly to me, that this, there was, there's a public hearing for a potential site when the city hasn't selected.
It's their right to do, and they have applied, and so, they do have a right under the regulation to check that box, so to speak.
So, presumably, we could have eight individuals, or nine?
We could.
I forget how many have applied, they're just going to, to me, just go out and have their own meeting, and-
Well, they have to have their own meeting. I mean, that is part of the regulation. They have to notify butters, they have to publish, and they have to have a certain notice that's required under the, under the Canvas Control Commission. Separate from, and then, if they do get a host community agreement, then they have to go to the planning board and go through all of our local, you know, hearings and notices as well. So, it's two separate things.
Maybe it's just me, it just seems that the horse is being put before the cart, they don't have, they don't have any-
They don't have a host community agreement yet.
Right, there's no agreement, so why go out and maybe, you know, sort of, I don't want to say alarm, but let, you know, the neighborhood's probably, you know, going to be saying, well, you're having a public hearing, you've been issued something, and they have not been issued anything at all whatsoever.
Yeah, no, and I don't think, for instance, they don't have to have a host community agreement before they hold their community meeting under the regulation. And I, that's the choice of the applicant.
Okay. Council Elliot, I believe the clerk had added to this.
Clarify for you, Counselor, I receive not a lot of them, but a few for them requesting me just to post it. It's more of an informational gathering that they have, that I think they're required from the regulations from the state. I don't think it's subject to an open meeting law, it's just an informational gathering that the community gets out there, they put it in the paper. I don't think they do any notice or any mail-in at that, it's just a, an initial thing that they, they come about, and they've had a couple over Cobblestones, I think, two years ago, I remember one coming in, and recently, I had one, I think it's going to be over at Middlesex Street, that, it's all part of it, the early part of the process.
No, I, I thank you for that explanation, Mr. Clerk and Madam Manager. Just by virtue of the process, anyone, you know, the average person out there saying, oh, there's a public hearing about this marijuana retail shop, so, you would think that it's, it's part of the process, but it's not part of our process.
It's not part of our, and it's not a public hearing.
I just want to get some clarification.
But if they do get a host community agreement, then they do have to have public hearing, as I said, they have to go to the planning board and go through our local public hearing requirements.
So, how will that, how will that evolve, the host community agreement? It doesn't require council approval?
No.
Doesn't require anything? Are we going to, are you going to give us an update?
We will, we will give the subcommittee an update.
As to those that you're considering before the issue?
Yes, we will, we will talk to the council about that. You know, one of the, we will get you a report.
That's good, I don't need to ask so many questions, but it's just, it's one of these evolving issues, and you see that notice that there's a public, you know, it's just unsettling at this point, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Council Nul?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the report really, it's really concise, and the report really assure residents that, you know, this facility is very safe and secure, look at the number of years that officers respond and/or the Fire Department respond, but barely, it's very, very small, a few, few time in so many years, you know, which is a great thing. So, thank you for the report, Madam Manager.
Yes, and the Chief, Chief Winward is here as well, who can attest to Fire Department response, or, or no need for.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Yes, both facilities in Lowell, there's one on East Marimac Street, and one on Lincoln and Tanner. We have not had any problems there, we've had maybe three calls over the last year for a faulty carbon monoxide detector. I talked to Superintendent Richardson and Deputy Superintendent Friedle, and they both told me the same thing with the police, they've had a few false alarm calls there, but overall, the buildings have been very safe, and we haven't had any problems, either for police or fire.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Next, we have Lowell Transitional Living Center Shelter issue, Council Milonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the city manager, thank you for having that meeting with Mr. McMahon, the Executive Director of the Shelter, and staff members, and having the Captain LaRocque and then his replacement to actually talk about the- talk about the calls that were there for the three months prior to your meeting. I think just showing the shelter that we care about them being a good neighbor, I think, is important. I think the report's a good report. I think that the fact that they're now putting rules in place to kind of calm down what's going inside, what's going on inside the shelter as well as outside the shelter, I think is important. So I certainly appreciate the report and I also appreciate the city-owned lot being cleaned up as well. It looks, it looks very good. Thank you.
Counsel Lee, then the City Manager.
I just wanted to say quickly that in the past couple of weeks, I've been doing some work on Jackson Street. So I see the shelter every day. And, you know, it's a good report and everybody's trying to work together, but the obvious problem is you get close to 100 people every morning that you kick out with nowhere to go, nothing to do. And that's the issue. So we should be working together on trying to get whatever, get them somewhere, get them services, give them something to do during the day. I know that there's a few empty spaces around there, buildings or lots or whatever, but if something or somebody could come in and provide space for people to educate themselves and keep busy during the day, that would be a big help around there. Maybe we could talk to some of the landlords, but something needs to be done. You just can't put 90 people out in the street every day and not expect things to happen. Thank you.
Madam Manager.
Yeah, we will continue to work with the shelter. As I said, you know, the Police Department, my office, we've talked to them. We're working with their policies and asking them to implement them so that people can coexist harmoniously. There's issues about loitering, as you brought up, and trying to work on that. You know, understanding that homelessness is a regional issue and in Lowell, being the only shelter, we take a lot of the region's homelessness. And the current situation is not the best for other types of services during the day. So I think it's a large problem. I think we need to work together on it and so that, you know, needed assistance is being provided and at the same time, it's not negatively impacting residences or businesses. And so, so we're trying to have an open and honest discussion with the folks. We did meet with the Regional Director from Boston who came up and so we're working together.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mayor. Last page of the report spoke of the numbers of homeless camp and it's unknown. I know that also report indicated that the LPD District Respond Officers and the Shelter's staff, the Lowell Transitional Living Center staff is working together to conduct count on homeless camp. Would you, at some point, when you get the result or the number, would you report back to us on that, the number of homeless camp throughout the city?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We, after the meeting, we were, the discussion came up whether they keep any type of count and it seemed that at current time, no one was. And so that's when the Police Chief had indicated that the Police Department, working with their staff, will conduct that.
Thank you.
Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes we have to think outside of the box and say, why not? And when we think about activities and we think of the Boys Club and the Girls Club and the Boys and Girls Club, and then we think about another age group and we think about a senior center that seniors can go and have interactions and not be lonely. And then we think about the kids that are young adults now and they're between the ages of 18 and 24, and we never had a place for them. And now we have what's called UTech and we have a place for them. And then we look at the people that have been, you know, opened the door and left out of the shelter and into the street and we say, why not these people? And then you think of the words Recovery Cafe and you think that maybe in time, there'll be such a place where that these people, and I don't mean these people in a derogatory way, but this group of people that are homeless, that slept the night at the shelter and there's no place for them but to be put out into the outside elements of the outside world and could get into destruction because of their idle time, idle hands as the devil's workshop. But instead of that, they have a place to go, which is probably a Recovery Cafe where they could probably learn how to use a computer or get interested in some type of thing that might spark the desire to get a job and exercise or get fit, physically fit. I don't know. Maybe there's things like this that could happen. And so when you think of the shelter, I think of things like that and maybe it'll be possible that we'll have such a place for them.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion? Next, we have National Grid Updates. Counsel Leahy also addressed some of my motion, some parts of my motion also.
Sure, thank you. Counsel Leahy. Through you to the Manager. So they declined not to come in, but what I was looking for was not to reprimand them, but just to go over safety issues and not so much the, you know, some of the mistakes that are being made now with the transition of management doing the job that the lockout workers are doing. But even what we talked about last week with people knocking on, you know, subcontractors knocking on doors at 8:30 at night, going to certain spots three or four times telling us that there's no issue, and yet the fourth time, they come back to digging up the road. So I'm disappointed that they wouldn't come in to do this, but, you know, there was an editorial in the Lowell Sun this week about the lockout and for the most part, I agree with it, you know, maybe government should be staying out of this private dispute. But you can't deny that they locked them out, they can't come to terms on an agreement, yet we've got all these people in Lawrence and Andover, North Andover, that don't have any gas, probably up until Christmas. They could be putting everybody's efforts over there, putting these people back to work, having them help out so people can have a Thanksgiving in their home, yet they can't come to an agreement. So, you know, it's just disappointing. They've got to be responsible and respectful as citizens of Lowell. And you can't have your subcontractors out at night knocking on doors, you know, asking to come in to check things in their house or even, we don't even know what that other group was doing about walking around saying that they were with National Grid and they want to save us more money.
Right.
So it's just disappointing that they wouldn't come in. Thank you.
Madam Manager.
Thank you. And through you to the council. So we did request them to come in to discuss these issues, including the knocking on doors in the evening to check on gas service or reported leaks and the like, which they declined to do and gave some of the reasons, including the current moratorium by DPU. We do, however, have meetings with National Grid, both tomorrow and Thursday, to discuss a number of issues, including some of those that you've raised. So though they're not coming in to the formal council meeting, they are coming in for meetings on those two days. We will have an update for you as far as the results of those meetings.
Could I also ask a question? Could you ask them what steps National Grid will be taking to assure the city is safe? In other words, can they at least submit something in writing as to what steps they are taking? Is that possible?
Yeah, we can get you that. They did give us some information, but we will get an update with, from them either tomorrow or Thursday, depending on which representatives are present, and we'll get you an update on that as part of the report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. As Counsel Leahy stated, we're not asking them to come before us to beat up on them, but we're asking them to come before us to give our constituents, our citizens, an answer as to what is happening. Is there any way of forcing that issue as a city?
Not to my knowledge. We could refer to the Law Department, you know, that we've invited them to come. I agree with you in terms of they are a utility that we are customers of throughout the city. I think it would be appropriate for them to come to the council and answer questions. They have indicated, whether it's based on advice of their council, they are under investigation. And so for a variety of reasons, they're declining to come to public meetings, but they are going to continue to participate and give us reports. But we, I will certainly talk to the Law Department, but I don't know what power we have over a company.
I understand. But if it's possible at some point to push the envelope, maybe that would help. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Next is Railway Issue. Counsel Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you for the report. I have to say, thank you so much for sending out those letters. It was frustrating reading. We reached out to Cynthia Scaronno and she's failed to respond to our repeated request for a meeting. I feel that Pan Am needs to be a good partner and there's been many, many motions on this floor with regards to keeping Lowell clean. And so I'm curious about the, have we received the mail return receipt from Pan Am with the date of when they, when they received the notice, this letter, to David Fink? Because it says here, within seven days from the receipt of this notice, they will start getting $300 per day. And I feel that if they're not going to be a good partner, then we need to start doing something to make sure that they, they clean this area up. So I'd like to know, do we have the return receipt in hand?
We can find out, Counselor. I mean, we don't, I certainly don't have that as we sit here, but we have been in contact with them. We have had conversations with them. Not surprisingly, based on their prior history over many, many years, they take the position that they don't have to do certain things because of federal law and the protections they're afforded. We also have been in touch with the MBTA and will be back to the MBTA because we believe that that may be another avenue of leverage here with the MBTA.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Counsel Conway, then Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the City Manager. First of all, I want to say that the motion that was originally put on by Counsel Cirillo, I think, was timely. I think it was excellent so that we review this, this ongoing problem. And I can certainly understand the frustration by everyone at this table and in this room. If you take a look at this Pan Am and take a look at the evaluations online, it's bizarre. It really is. Things like horrible with customer service, while we obviously have seen that. Management unprofessional, completely chaotic, no performance evaluations and completely disorganized and vindictive. I mean, these are the words that are pretty consistent used for this particular business. And I'm not surprised that there was no response. The thing that I would, that I'd ask about is the letter that was sent out that said may, may have a $300 penalty. Why can't we just say, can we up that instead of say will, instead of may? I mean, I, you know, again, I'm sure it's very frustrating and I'm not an attorney, but I think that, you know, they, looking at the history, they're going to take that letter and they're going to put that in the bottom drawer somewhere. They might even not even use the bottom drawer, they just throw it in the ashbarrow. They could care less. So I think that, and I think that we have to ratchet up the approach to them as quick as possible and as effective as possible because needless to say, they haven't paid attention at all. Do you, where do we go from this, this letter here?
Well, we will, as I said, perhaps double back to the MBTA who initially put us on the path to Pan Am. This is, again, a problem. We'll refer it to the Law Department. The Law Department has worked on this issue for decades when it comes to Pan Am. You know, I wish there was a better answer, but the truth is that...
You mean, we don't have the answer tonight, right?
I mean, we don't have much leverage over, you know, Pan Am and they unfortunately take that position. They don't care about being, and I say this based on not just this situation, but instances in the past where we've had dealings with them. They know federal law very well and they know that, you know, basically, we don't have jurisdiction. So however, if we can work via other channels, that's what we're exploring. But we will refer it to the Law Department Counselor.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Madam Manager. I can't get the smile off my face because I've been here long enough to know that Pan Am could care less. And it seems to me that you didn't have a good week. First National Grid doesn't want to meet and now this Pan Am doesn't. It was not a good week for meeting.
I don't take it personal.
Please don't, please don't, because you've been here long enough to know that Pan Am, no matter if you put the words may up it from may to will, you will be fined. You will definitely go to jail. They could care less. We're not getting the money today, tomorrow or ever. We demanded that they come and pick up the creosote ties so kids wouldn't be playing on them and it was like pulling teeth. We have a better shot at seeing God than to see them respond to anything that we would ask them to do. So we can fine them till the cows come home. They're not paying anything. So I'm smiling because I'm not surprised to see this. This is not a good neighbor. They're not a partner. They will never be a partner. We're wasting our time. And I feel bad because the people on Wall Street called me as well as you and they actually climbed a fence and went down and took all that soil debris and contamination and moved it into a pile away from their house because they didn't want any diseases because this company could care less if they rot to death. But that's what we're dealing with. And I'm sorry to be so blunt, but I've been around a long time and they don't care. I'm sorry to say it, but thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Next, on the Information Reports, Open Space Plan. Madam Manager.
Yes, we, last week, we did put the draft report on all of your desks and here tonight to do a brief presentation on the Open Space Plan. Christine McColl.
Hi, Christine McColl.
Giovanni Bais.
Christine McColl, Senior Planner in the Department of Planning and Development.
I'm Giovanni Baisros, Neighborhood Planner.
And so as you all received last week, the draft plan we've been working on all year, so we just kind of wanted to give you a quick update about how we got to that. So I think I can figure this out. Okay. So an open space plan, we do it every five years. We take an existing condition, an assessment of the existing conditions of our parks, open spaces and recreational programs. They help us set a long-term vision for the city, both what we are working on internally but also directly communicated from the residents. This is a great tool for us to identify what facilities need updating and when, but more importantly, having an approved plan by the state allows us to apply for grant funding. This year, we've engaged over 500 residents on our email listserv that we were communicated with throughout the entire year. We had over 250 participants at three of our larger public meetings that we hosted at the senior center. We also, we had a survey, we got about 200 responses, which surprisingly was pretty consistent with all previous plans. We engaged two youth groups in the city with about approximately 50 teenagers to hear directly from them. And we actually got some really interesting feedback that we wouldn't have otherwise heard at meetings where adults tend to attend. We've also attended smaller events throughout the community, chop dinners, the seed swap, other community events where a diverse group of residents would be. We wanted to make sure we were connecting directly with them. We also attended every single neighborhood meeting over the course of two months in the beginning of the process. And so what was really clear to us were these 10 themes that we've sort of put in this green chart. And if you have seen some of the reports we put together throughout the year, this is on, in almost every single one of them. These were the top 10 things that residents really wanted to see. They wanted to see better sidewalks and crosswalks at parks, getting to parks. They want to see more trees. They wanted more access to water-based recreation. Dog parks, activities for teens and kids, events beyond downtown. Cleanup and maintenance of our existing facilities was really important. Better lighting, clearer signage. Better lighting, clearer signage, and better opportunities for bikers. And then from those 10 themes, which we really got from the first half of the year, we have these six more specific goals. And then from those six goals, if you actually turn to page 92 of the packet we gave you last week, that's sort of the meat and potatoes of the whole plan where we really got into specific... These are the six goals, and from these goals, we identified specific action items that we would tackle over the next five years. So, improving pedestrian connections and experiences. This was really probably one of the things we heard a lot about. People feeling safe getting to a park, how to get to a park, and even how to get to one park to another park was really important. And then how to do that both by walking, but also by bike. Increasing water-based recreational opportunities, kayaking, canoes, canoeing, different points of the river. They want us, the city, to prioritize improved maintenance, security, and preservation of our parks. They want to see increased communication to the public. The Rec Department actually has a great website, but I think unfortunately, most people didn't know about the Rec Department website. So, I think also pushing the word out that you can get a username and password and see every park, playground, and you can see what's available, what's been permitted. So, really getting the word out to people about that. And increasing recreational opportunities and improving our existing parks. So, we're here tonight because we, after our year-long public process, we drafted that about 100-page plan. And so, we have it out for public comment for the next, till the end of the month. We just wanted to give you guys an update. We will be going to the Conservation Commission this week, the Planning Board next week. It's on the website. We emailed it to every interested party that we've engaged with over the course of the year. At the beginning of December, we're actually going to incorporate all of the comments that we've gotten in this period. We're going to submit it to the state. They're going to get it back to us with their own comments. And so, once we incorporate their changes, we will actually bring it back to the City Council, to the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and actually a formal approval from NEMCOG as well before it's finally and officially adopted. So, we're encouraging everyone, if they have any questions, concerns, comments. We actually have a dedicated email, openspace@loalema.gov, but anyone can feel free to call us directly, and we'll be happy to talk. And so, our information is up there.
Counsel Cirillo.
Hi, yes. I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work. I've been to a few of your meetings at the, at the Senior Center and also with the neighborhoods. And I, I just was amazed at how wonderful these meetings were and how great you were. And so, I just want to say thank you because this is such a wonderful thing for Lowell. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Lee.
I just want to say the same thing. I've seen them out night after night at all these meetings, and I think that they did a great job so far, and it was a lot of work. And I appreciate all the effort that you put into it.
Thank you.
You have the counsel. Thank you. Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very happy that this report come out of a very diverse meeting with various groups, and you mentioned about 50 teen. I think we need to renew our commitment, you know, to recreational program for all walk of life, and particularly for young people. And you include young people in your discussion and come about this very comprehensive report. I thank you for doing that.
Counsel Elliott.
Just briefly, a couple of things stuck up to me at some of the suggestions. One is security at parks, that people not feel safe or they're looking for additional security. I know you touched on it a little bit, but considering we have, I think, how many parks we have? 90? 92?
91 or two.
Yeah, so there were a couple of things that came out of that. One of them was a conversation that actually happened earlier in the chamber already regarding needle disposal in parks, that just creating an issue where parents felt a little unsure about, you know, just letting their kids kind of run around without kind of knowing whether the space was clean. So, we included a couple of action items related to that. One of them being that somebody come on board to address that. So, it was great that that's happening tonight, already checking things off the to-do list. And then another one was just a suggestion that we heard at one of the, at one of the meetings was regarding blue lights, which are similar to what we see on college campuses. People had, you know, asked whether or not that was feasible, particularly in larger parks. One of the locations that people mentioned specifically was South Common because that does get a lot of cut-through traffic in the evening with people getting on and off the train, that there's just some sense of safety if people, you know, know that they can press a blue light, that there'll be some kind of response. So, we're not sure whether or not that's feasible or reasonable at all locations, but the, that, those were two of the more specific things.
And the second one was additional recreation opportunities or programs. What, any in specific? I mean, I just know that there are youth leagues throughout the city. I know during the summer, the city does offer recreation programs. I think we need to try to get information out because we have a very large staff, and sometimes the numbers are just, they're not there. And I don't know whether people don't know about it, or I think that's always been an area of, an area we could work on anyway, considering, you know, during the summertime, we offer great programs. Is that...
Yeah, I think that some of it was just a lack of people being aware that some of the programming existed for youth, things like, like we asked a lot of, like when we met with the teenagers, we asked them if they were aware, how many of them knew how to swim? And then we asked if they were aware that the city offered, you know, free swim classes. And, you know, there was just like a lack of knowledge that those things existed. So, it wasn't necessarily about creating new programming. It was just some, some, a bit about letting people know that the programming existed. A lot of people were also totally unaware that the Rec Department does offer even adult programming. Sometimes, like we've offered yoga and zumba and different kinds of things. So, I think it's, in some cases, less about new creation of programming and more about having to rethink how we're getting some of the information out to people.
Pickleball is coming.
It's on the list.
It is.
Thank you.
Counsel Elliott. Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great job, ladies. This is a lot of work that you put in, and everybody's mentioning it, but this is what I was going to say on number 38. Restripe select tennis courts to include line markings for pickleball and purchase appropriate nets. I hope Nancy Donahue is tuning in because she'll be happy about that. I don't know if you have a timeline for something like that.
We indicate it to be the first three years.
First three years?
Because we potentially may have identified more than one park, but we paid it a priority for the first three years, the next three years.
So, something could happen next year.
In the spring.
In the spring.
There you go.
Yeah, and I think, you know, pickleball's another example of having this plan address the issue that we wanted recreation opportunities available for people of all ages in our communities. So, yes, young people use our parks, and we wanted to hear from them, but we also have folks, you know, who are interested in playing pickleball, and we want to just create an opportunity for folks of all ages to enjoy our recreational facilities.
Thank you.
We're all set? Thank you. I need a motion to accept these reports as a report of progress.
So moved.
Okay, by Counsel Cirillo and second by Counsel Elliott. Next, we have Communication appoint and reappoint members of the Hunger Homeless Commission. They are Elizabeth Higgins, Gretchen Gilmore, Susan Thompson, and Brendan Crocker. Need a motion to accept, place and file by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Elliott. Yes, Counsel.
It's good to see that these appointments are being made. I know there's some additional appointments been made in the past, but the commission has not met in quite some time. Is the expectation, knowing we're going into, you know, the weather and homelessness problem?
I think they did just have a meeting last week, Counsel. I'll check and get back to you.
Okay, well, there's a member that was appointed that's either not on that email list and has been anxious to, to get involved. So, I think that would be, if they have met, could we? I'll give you the name of...
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, I, I think it was just recently, within the past week or so, that there was a, a meeting. So, we'll make sure.
Well, this young lady's a member. She's been appointed quite some time ago. So, could you get her email right here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know. We'll make sure.
All set? All right, thank you. Next, we have votes from the City Manager. Vote to accept, expand Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Grant from DOER up to 12,500. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. authorize the City Manager to accept and expand the Municipal Energy Technical Assistance grant from Massachusetts Department of Energy to conduct feasibility study for energy storage at Starkoson Middle School. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Conway, second by Counsel Mercia. Any discussion? Roll call. Mayor Samaras. Yes. Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
That's nine yeses. Next, we have a vote. Authorize City Manager to execute license agreement overhanging sign at 18 Hertz Street, Salem 5th, and savings. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize City Manager to enter into a license agreement with Salem 5th, send savings to approach upon the city of Lowell property at 15 Hertz Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Conway. Any discussion? Mr. Milonazo.
Just a stickler for detail. I don't think that's the name of the bank. I think it's Salem 5 Bank. I don't think it's the Savings Bank. I could be wrong, but the sign, the sign does not say Savings Bank.
The Salem?
It just, it just simply says Salem Bank, Salem 5 Bank.
And it should have savings?
No, it should not.
It should not?
I don't think it should, but that's just, you know, I don't know.
That will be checked in. Thank you.
I, I think you're right because the, the sign attached says Salem 5 Bank.
Roll call. Mayor Samaras. Yes. Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Nine yeses. Okay, next, 6.3, we have vote authorize the manager to execute an MOU local 170 5A. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the City Council to ratify and approve the execution of the City Manager of the Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Lowell Local 170 5A, Council 93A of Alceo, covering the period July 1, 2018 through June 3, 2021. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Conway. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call. Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Nine yeses. We have, we are zoning subcommittee meeting tonight. We have a...
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. The zoning subcommittee met tonight at 5:30. In attendance were members of the subcommittee, myself, Counsel Noon, and Counsel Kennedy, as well as all of our, all of the other city councils were in attendance during the meeting. We also had Development Director Eric Slagle, who's still here this evening, along with Assistant City Solicitor Gordon. We had the Fire Chief, Winward here, as well as the Police Superintendent Kelly Richardson. This is our third meeting. We had a meeting in May, a meeting in August where we were talking about amendments to the rental property ordinance. And it's been an interesting discussion. It was a, it was very well-attended. We probably had over 100 people between the landlords that were here, as well as the neighborhood residents that were here. And it's still a, a work in progress, to say the least. We did have the third draft from the Director of Development Services, and there was a motion made, I'm not bringing it forward this evening, but there was a motion made by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon, to actually remove part of the current draft where it talked specifically about those students that were matriculated in either Middlesex Community College or New Mass Lowell, only because the burden of actually trying to enforce that and identify that. So, that is going to be, assuming it survives the additional meetings going forward, brought back to the full council at some point in, in the future. It was also suggested that Mr. Slagle meet with, and I hate to put it this way, both sides because I'm really hoping we get to a point where we're all working together on this, not on these amendments, but that we ask Mr. Slagle to meet with the neighborhood representatives as well as the representatives of the landlords between now and, I did check with the city clerk. Our next meeting will probably be December 11th. We might do it, if we could make it, at 5 o'clock as opposed to 5:30 just to give a little extra time for those that obviously have a very serious interest in this, in this issue. Again, it just comes down to making sure that we enforce the laws that we currently have in the books, but at the same time, trying to be cognizant of the fact that we are a university community, college, community, but make sure, as Counsel Kennedy so happily put it, that we're not really disrupting the neighborhoods that these homes are, are in. We get some updates, although brief, about some of the enforcement orders that are now taking place. We're hearing, I'm sure we're all getting emails and, and phone calls from people that live next to buildings that have been bought and have been renovated, and they're, in their opinion, they're being overcrowded with either students or more than three unrelated people in the household. So, again, it is a work in progress, and I want to thank Eric and the, and the Law Department for their work to date, and the neighborhood groups for really stepping up and saying, you know, we care about our city. We want to make sure that what's ever happening with the landlords is happening in a way that they can coexist with the neighborhood. So, again, that's a report of progress, and I would encourage my colleagues to, you know, to bring up additional, additional comments. But again, as Eric's, this, this draft was really a permit, if you will, to a pathway to try to work and coexist with, with, within the neighborhood group. So, again, there's probably close to 100 people here this evening, and I anticipate that will continue until we come up with a, an amendment that's acceptable to all. Again, at the end of the day, everybody won't be happy, but we're hopeful that as a, as a council, we'll be able to improve the current ordinance in order to improve what's going on in our neighborhoods. So, that's a report of progress.
Thank you, Counsel Milonazo. Any, Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. It was a good meeting. It was very well-attended, as Counsel Milonazo said. But I did want to, as far as I'm concerned, I want to make a couple of things clear that a few of the speakers were talking about, and that is that, you know, this is an ordinance that's going to deal with rental properties. It's not student, a student population that we're concerned about. We're concerned about rental properties in the city. And, you know, we need investors to come in and clean up some of these houses and buildings that are dilapidated. But if you are a resident and you live in the city, you live in the city alone, and you have a huge investment in the city. Someone that lives outside of the city that comes in and uses our community as a business opportunity, you know, let's just call it what it is. It's a business opportunity for them, and the residents that live here are much more invested than someone who comes in and spends their money. So, as far as I'm concerned, we're going to, you know, try to accommodate everybody, but if you are a resident of Lowell, you are invested in the community. We appreciate people that come in, spend their money, and, and invest and run their businesses here. But, you know, we have to look out for the residents first.
Any other discussion? Need a motion to accept as a report of progress, Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Conway. Okay. Next, we have petitions 91 through 96. I'd like to read them and a motion to bundle these.
Second.
All right, property damage, 91. 92 is Jorge Gomez requests installation of handicap parking sign at 427 Lakeview Avenue. 93, Lisbon Vanilla requests installation of handicap parking sign at 95 Lundberg Street. 9.4, Mildred Kirch requests installation of handicap parking sign at 58 Bay Street, number 1. And 95, Milma Kumapatel requests installation of a 15-minute parking sign at 421 Central Street and a 15-minute parking sign around corner at Charles Street. And finally, 96, Kim Hayden requests permission to address council regarding safety concerns in the area of 219 Jackson Street. So, we have motion to, yep, by Counsel Kennedy.
So, they've all been bundled, right, with the previous motion? So, I would just move that they be referred to the Law Department for a report and recommendation. But also, Mr. Mayor, I'd call your attention to, to the last one because I guess there was a speaker, is there a speaker registered on that one, or is that...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, there was a, there was a, an individual that came in. She said she may be here tonight. She is not here tonight. I told her what would happen with the petition regardless of whether she was here or not.
I told her what would happen with the petition, regardless of whether she was here or not, so.
So I would make that as a motion.
Motion, and second by Counsel Mirso. Thank you. Next, we have city council motions. First, by Counsel Leahy, request city manager provide a report from Election Department. We got an updating all voter equipment.
Second.
Second by Counsel Noon.
Thank you. I'll be brief with my motions. The, the first one, basically, yes, let's get, let's evaluate what we have for equipment. Let's see what the cost is to replace it. And as far as the check-in, when you go to check-in, I guess there's a new system. Instead of going through the paper file, they have some new system with an iPad, and I forget what they call it, but that might be a more efficient, quicker way to check people in and out. So if we can just get report and recommendation on that, thank you.
Next, motion by Counsel Leahy, request city manager provide a report regarding review of the physical location of the city hall departments to ensure efficient operation.
Second.
Second by Counsel Mirso.
Thank you. So this motion, again, I spoke to you, Madam Manager, about this. You know, let's take a look at where our departments are, how efficiently they are working together. Let's move things around so we can have better communication between departments, better physical locations for our departments. So if we could get a report on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy, motion is 10.3, request the city manager provide a report regarding evaluation and review of existing city department, city hall department to ensure efficient operation. Counsel Leahy, second. Second by Counsel Mirso.
Thank you. Counsel Leahy, go ahead. Through you to the manager. So again, not physical plants, but physical departments. So, and I know this one would take a little bit longer, but I think it's time that we take a good review, see what's working, what's not working, what can be improved. Tonight, again, we talked about inspections, you know. Is that another department, like I had mentioned in the past about the electricians? You know, should we have different shifts so that we can go out and, and inspect apartments and, and buildings at night versus having everybody on a day shift? Electrical department, you know, whatever departments we need that should be in our buildings after schools out, after offices are closed, so we can get more work done. So that's the gist of the motion. And, and again, I know that one will take longer to do, I'll give you a month, but that would take longer to do, and just, let's see what we can do, you know? Let's review them and see how we can get more efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. 10.4, Mayor Samaras, motion requesting the city manager provide report regarding step that can be taken to increase the availability of parking in the Hampton Canal District prior to the building of a new garage. Second by Counsel Milonazo. Mayor Samaras.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is not an easy request. As we know, the courthouse will, should be ready next, next year, and we expect the courthouse and, and the parking garage to be built. But I'll tell you, I've gotten a lot of calls and found it interesting myself to say you want to meet somebody at Mill 5. Had a meeting there with five people one day, and all five of us were late, as much as by a half an hour, trying to find a parking spot to, to go there. I don't know what can be done, but we have businesses that are there and possible businesses that will be developing there, because it's a, it's a natural location with a great future. I was just wondering if we could have a review of the, of two issues, when the garage will be built, the timeline, and what's going to go on, but what possibilities, if any, are there to try to help citizens there with a little more parking? I don't have an answer, and really don't see an answer in a sense, but there has to be something.
Madam.
We will, we will get your report, Mr. Mayor. This is a, a very big issue, and I think we have to consider all things on the table as far as how we're going to address that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
But we will come back to you with the report.
Thank you, Madam Man, Manager. 11.1, the motions to enter into executive session regarding matter of litigation, namely food at all versus city of Lowell. Public discussion of any of this matter would be detrimental, would have a detrimental effect on the city position. Your motion to enter into executive session and, and adjourn from there.
Adjourn, adjourn from there, right.
Counsel.
Seconded.
Second by Counsel Cirillo, although, roll call please.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy. Counsel Mirso.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Nine yeas.